Coughlin, Chamberlain, and Goodnow will not be attending. Finally, an ongoing reminder that questions or comments by the public may be submitted at any item anytime by email to city.council@bremertonwa.gov. And Zoom recordings of study sessions will also be available online within a few days following the meeting. I was looking over to the side and he jumped the gun. I'd like to welcome our mayor, Eric Wheeler, here to present items A1 and 2. First one is to confirm reappointment of Mr. Gregory Dawson to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Mayor?
Yeah, so thank you, Council. Good evening. And these two probably don't need an introduction. They have been around serving well and have been well received and appreciated on the Parks Commission. I'm bringing it forward for your.
Okay, so for the record, we're doing A1 and 2 together, and the other one is confirm appointment of Ms. Catherine Wagle to the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, given that, you all, the applications are in the packet. Do we have any questions from the council?
Kudos on each. I have worked with both, and I agree with you. They're just fine people. Yeah.
Cool. I agree. These are both really great appointments to Parks Commission. Yeah. And I'm glad they're getting reappointed.
Yay volunteers.
I know.
And Mr. Dawson's lived in town for seventy-two years.
Amazing.
Yeah. And he's in my district. He's a neighbor.
Okay, I think we've said enough.
Consent.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next item up, I'd like to welcome our wastewater management, Mr. Eric Burris here, presenting sent item A3, which is the change order request performance information technologies for the wastewater HMI upgrade project. Mr. Burris, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, we had the SCADA Integrator Performance Integration Technologies contracted to upgrade our SCADA platform. The project had two major objectives, allowing city staff to more efficiently utilize and program our SCADA system and for increased redundancy and security. The approved contract amount was eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-four cents. The vendor has requested a change order in the amount of forty-four thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents for a grand total of one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars to complete the project. Any questions?
You have the numbers of different in mind.
So, the contract amount for eighty-seven thousand originally included sales tax. After the fact, I found out that this type of service was not taxable.
Okay.
So, we actually had whatever that difference is play. So, the origin included that amount.
But I still have a revised total amount of one twenty-three, eight fifty-seven in my packet.
I have that updated. I'm not sure why it didn't get updated.
Okay.
But that was caught previously.
I have one thirty-one, seven twenty. What do you have, Denise?
One thirty-one.
I have one, I have one twenty-three. Why do I have a different packet?
I have the same thing, one twenty-three. I downloaded it.
I just pulled it up.
I just pulled mine up.
It, the correction was probably made.
Yeah, it should be a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Oh, yeah, yes, to be done. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
And this was, I brought up in public works and discussed there. I remember this.
I didn't remember this big of a change order in public works.
I remember it was big because we talked about lessons learned and things like that. Wasn't that the case?
I think so. Well, part of the, part of the deal with this is we had the system that we were using was kind of antiquated. And then when they started working on it, they found out they opened kind of a can of worms with it being so old, it took a lot more work to bring it up to standard.
Yeah. Yeah.
Plus the overage.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to happen up to standard, should say in quotes, SCADA system when this is all done, then we're not just working with an old antiquated system trying to.
Right. Yes, yes. Yeah, it'll be a lot easier to work with. It will save one staff time when my SCADA tech builds out buildings on the, on the system. You can get it done in minutes versus days. So, there's going to be a lot of savings with that. It will also be easier for other entities to work on since this has been modernized. So, there's going to be savings in that too. More redundancy. We'll have to find a paperwork for that. Increased redundancy for both the SCADA servers and for the historian. With system platform, it will allow the historian to grab from both primary and secondary servers as well as work and forward. As long as one of our two servers is still online, we will not lose any data, which is very important.
Yeah.
We have a situation, we need to go back and figure out, look at the trending and go on SCADA, it'll be there, it won't be lost. So, which is wonderful.
There's a wastewater historian?
Well, an electronic one.
I just was thinking, what a great guy. So, I was looking at number six here, development environment constraints, and that looked like the big ticket item. When you say experience significant performance limitations, that's like bling changing. Was that, was that in fact the big ticket item? The largest cause of the forty-four grand upgrade?
That was one, that was, that was a larger portion than, like I said, basically dealing with something that was, hadn't been upgraded and updated for a long, long.
Okay. I am really very happy about this. It's great.
We were excited about it.
Yeah.
It's just unfortunate we have that large of an overage.
Will the wastewater on the west side be able to talk, do they have the same software as the east side, the smaller east side one?
Yeah, it'll all be, both, both plants and all of our load stations will be all the same. Yeah.
Thank you. I have a question. How was the original engineer's estimate developed?
So, the contractor worked very closely with my SCADA tech to try to figure out what it would entail. I can't delve into specifics on that, but we've worked very closely with these folks to develop this.
All right. Well, we certainly need it all working together. Have any other questions?
Are we treating this item? Thank you, Mr. Burris.
Thank you.
Okay, next two items, I'd like to welcome our contracts administrator, Melinda Monroe, and also Drew Pollen with Ogden Murphy Wallace P L L C here to present item A4. I assume he's online. Sir, I believe you're probably in Seattle. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
There you go. Well, welcome. And this is for item A4, the assignment and assumption agreement for Public Defense Services Agreement with Yellish Barker and Cunningham P L L C. Ms. Monroe, go ahead.
Be really brief and then hand it over to Drew here, just to let you know maybe where we are needing to change our provider. That was a sudden change. We've been very happy with LaCrosse and Murphy, but we do need to make that change. And so, we did reach out to Ogden Wallace for that assistance and just to coordinate that. We were able to use Section 20 of the agreement to make it within our current agreement. But I will let Drew speak to just the next steps that we spoke in answering questions that we have. But that, and I just have to give a big thanks to Drew. He's been wonderful to work with on my trip notice. So, we really appreciate it.
Great. Mr. Pollen, floor is yours.
So, the, the action item itself is going to be the assumption component of this contract. And essentially, what, what has been worked out is, is that Yellish Barker Cunningham will effectively step into the shoes of LaCrosse and Murphy. From a cost perspective, there, we're not looking at an increase in your monthly payment for the remainder part of your contract. You'll notice that there is also a contract amendment that is still being negotiated between the city and Yellish. And you might notice in that, in that contract, there is about an eighteen thousand dollar amount. That's essentially to be a, a cost that would be paid upfront once Yellish was to assume the contract and to execute the contract amendment. And, and that eighteen thousand is money that's going to be credited towards the monthly payment. And, and then that's simply to deal with startup costs. If you think about it from a firm perspective, you need to be able to get certain systems in place, especially if you're a public defense firm like Yellish is, you're being asked to, to assume, to consume a, a number of cases and to kind of step into the role that a, that a public defense firm has to step into. And so fundamentally, at the end of the day, what we anticipate is, is that this will not have an increased cost to the city. Yellish is very much interested in a longer-term relationship with the city, which is not too unsurprising. I, I understand for the last three or four years that essentially LaCrosse and Murphy has had their contract renewed with incremental monthly payment increases over time. I don't know if that's necessarily what the city wants to go through, goes, wants to do moving forward. There's, I think, a few avenues open to you moving forward, whether it is with Yellish, another firm, or, or working with the county. But fundamentally, at the end of the day, the, the, the goal of this assumption is, is you then have a steady hands for the end of the year, and you can then pivot towards the longer-term conversations that you are going to need to have for what your public defense services are going to look like in 2026 and beyond. And, and with that, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, questions from the council? Go ahead.
Um, sitting on public safety, I don't believe that this was discussed. However, I'm not surprised to see it. And I'm asking, I'm looking back at our city attorney here. I've certainly been made aware of current upcoming, you know, challenges negotiating this. Does that have you out? Kylie, do you want to step in here? Give some context.
Sure. The context here is, LaCrosse is working a very small firm, and Jacob Murphy tragically impacted.
Yes.
Unexperienced. And so, that firm notified the city that they were not going to continue to provide services. Our office contacted Ogden Murphy to assist our finance department negotiating the next step, even under statute, that the attorney's office, because prosecutor's office is also in town, were prohibited from being involved in public defense contracts.
Right.
So, Ogden Murphy was there to assist Melinda Monroe in navigating this assumption. And it happened very fairly quickly over the last two to three weeks.
Okay.
And it missed the cycle for coming into public safety.
Okay.
Having all of the ducks in a row.
Okay.
A lot of the, the updates that we've been having on public defense and caseloads to the Public Safety Committee is really for Drew talking about.
Yes, for next steps, looking forward.
What we're looking at for tonight, and what Drew is here to advise the council on, is really for the end of this year.
Right.
And making sure that our services for public defense are accounted for and provided.
Sure. But I'm also hearing, and I'm also hearing you say that you have the capacity to possibly help us address future needs. The firm has the capacity. Okay.
Right.
Retainer with the city to advise our finance department in this area because we need an outside firm to do that. And they, they are the experts and advise a lot of cities that have a similar. What every city that has a business board or prosecution has a requirement to provide public defense.
But the landscape is changing. I want to make sure that council becomes aware of all that. That the landscaping for this had already been difficult to navigate, and it's going to become incredibly difficult to navigate when things move forward. So, good timing with this kind of analyzation. Thank you for the clarification. Thanks, Melinda.
If I may just add just a little context of, of the timeline we've been working with here, Mr. Murphy passed away on July 23rd. The city was informed by Mr. LaCrosse, who's the other named partner in the firm, that the firm would no longer be able to carry on with the contract two days later. And so, since July 25th, we've been scrambling to try to determine what our best outcome is to ensure the least amount of disruption to your public defense system. And I, I have to say, I give a lot of credit to Melinda. I give a lot of credit to your court staff. You have, who have helped disseminate and, and take some of the pressure off in terms of using the on-call public defenders to ensure that new cases got out, got assigned out, and then to quickly identify a suitable alternative, a, a firm with, with some capacity to take on these cases immediately. Because this, this is usually not a situation where you can move, you can turn quickly on the dime. I, I often, we've basically been land, trying to land, this has been our analogy, trying to land the plane on, on the freeway. And so, this is, this has been an all-hands-on-deck effort for the last three weeks, essentially. And so, the fact that we're, we're able to present you this, this particular assumption contract with, with the terms in it is, is a, at this stage, has been a mo, an all-hands-on-deck multi-person effort, for, to say the least.
Well, and kudos to everybody involved, truly.
Our community stepped up in a great deal of support as well. Yellish Barker Cunningham firm has been exceptional here from the beginning to work with, and I'm, I'm excited to work with them in the future. Back nothing less, but I have multiple across the community that really have stepped in. If it was on Calvary, it's that I've been working with.
Thanks. Hey, congratulations with the tough landscape out there for getting public defenders. So, well done you. Well done. Congratulations. And I think it reflects well on everyone that so many firms from the community also stepped up. So, well done on the building good working relationships over years. I wanted to just ask one question is, Mr. Pollen?
Yes.
P O L.
All right. Well, so, you know, I got some of the letters. Pollen, sorry. You mentioned eighteen grand, and I, I don't see eighteen grand in, in any of the four pages we have.
It, it's in there. In other words, it's a retain.
Where am I missing? Yeah, it's a retainer. Where am I missing?
It, it's in the contract. I just saw it.
I saw it.
Underpayment, section three, B, is the eighteen seven fifty, which would be applied towards August.
I'm looking at three, and I have release of liability and indemnification.
Uh, sections, uh, number three, section, section six payment on the bottom page two.
Page twenty-one in mine is A5 renewal of professional services with Impark.
Yeah, so just go back a little.
I, I did. I have three, three pages of Exhibit A, Public Defense Services, twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five assignment assumption. That's all I got.
It's more than three pages.
That's all I got.
Yes, anyway.
Great. Okay, thank you. So, if I had downloaded it at a different time, I might have been able to get it?
So, we don't know what the technical difficulties. We'll sort that out.
We know it's in there. Okay, that's great. Thanks.
And, and again, just to clarify, you're currently, you're paying a monthly payment of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred a month for your public defense services. That eighteen thousand dollars is being credited against the thirty-seven thousand. It's not in addition to thirty-seven thousand for the month of August.
No, I, I, I understood that. I just wanted to see that part, and I've seen it on the council presidents I've had. So, you know, I'm good to go.
Okay, how do we treat this item?
Consent.
Consent. Thank you, Mr. Pollen.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Melinda.
Uh, Melinda's here for the next item as well, which is renewal of professional services agreement with Imperial Parking Incorporated, otherwise known as Impark. Nobody's got anything to say about parking or parking enforcement and management services. Ms. Monroe, go ahead.
Much. This agreement provides a renewal of our parking management services with a five-year term with essentially holding costs as it the next five years, but with the option to increase by CPI with related wages. And right now, I guess the other major change is we are planning to reduce our meters. For the next year, we have a reduction of around eight meters. So, we have a little cost saving in that section of the agreement. Exhibit B to the agreement. And we also have sign updates that are going to be occurring at no cost. I did not bring the sample with me tonight. That Michael Bigg now is not here, but I do have that down in my office. I'm happy to share that, we can share that with you. You can see, we just reorganized things a bit. Exhibit C, we used more traditional method and formatting. But there are no major changes to the services. We did formalize the use of a marginalization, including and added a flat fee amount.
So, they're, they're good to go doing that now?
They have, they have been booting. And, and we do have an updated process, and I do have to thank our parking enforcement officer for just the use of technology and finding that process, rolled that policy out last year. And have been working to make that more efficient with the goal of just not even needing that in the future. But we are still in a place of needing it. So, we have been making that process more efficient, but also equitable. So, that's important to all of us, and I have to thank him for finding a method, using our LPR system for that. And with that, I'm just gonna see what questions you have.
Okay.
Thanks. Well, first off, I wanted to thank you for bringing to us a contract that's not due for renewal in January until January, in August, when things are slow. Thank you. This should really spread. I had a few specific questions. In my district, we have a lot of abandoned vehicles. Some are abandoned and unregistered, some are abandoned registered and on blocks, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, I'm specifically, on mine, it's page twenty-two, it's number one, the letter F. But really, for the whole seventies, it's the, it talks about the commuter area parking enforcement. But it's really for the whole thing, which is, can we add complaint-driven enforcement of parking regulations in residential areas of, you know, abandoned, vandalized, unregistered, and otherwise not permitted vehicles? Can we add that to the contract? Is that something that they do? Because right now, the process is quite complicated to get a vehicle like that off the streets.
Does that come under on-call enforcement?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have two areas, it's section two and three in, in that area, where we use random restricted residential enforcement. And in that response, they are looking for safety issues, but then abandoned vehicle on blocks is typically considered a safety issue. There may be something with a higher level of safety that is concerning to them, and then on-call enforcement. And we are utilizing for our roads, we use cartograph now. We've switched over to that as our primary channel. It's not the only channel that we receive requests through, but we have been trying to reduce the number of channels just so that we can streamline that process. And we also are, you know, asking that that kind of vehicle would simply be impounded immediately. The, the laws, the codes themselves have some, they have multiple steps that we must go through our enforcement officers just to prepare our impact packet, and then that law enforcement have to go through in order to, to impound that vehicle. So, it, it, we are working to speed that up. But there are certain areas where it simply isn't, you know, the expectation just needs to be communicated more clearly. And we're also working on that communication method just so that folks can understand this is the timeframe we expect from this vehicle. And we aren't necessarily going to be able to get into all the whys. I mean, we certainly could, but, but there are many whys. You know, why are we waiting five days? Depends on vehicle, you know, if it's inoperable, I am, I am asking that. There is no wait time on that. If it's inoperable, please just impound that right away.
How do you determine that?
There are determination backups, however, and they don't always match with what you, you think it might be. So, you need to have the windshield out. You need to have a missing tire. You know, maybe a missing, uh, uh, mirror might qualify.
A non-working engine.
But a non-working engine may qualify as well. You have to be able to prove it.
Right.
With, with, you know, visual evidence, you know, we aren't necessarily going to get a warrant. Right, yes. Which happens, yeah.
Pretty unusual visual evidence.
There's differences to if it's outside of the right way and it's just, just inside on private property, a whole separate problem.
Yeah, I, I just, I, that part I get. It's just things that are parked in the right way. And then I did have a bunch of questions on random restricted residential enforcement and E-zone enforcement, which is, think, think, think. So, there's random restricted residential enforcement. Is there a way for me to find out where in District Six they have randomly checked in the past eight months?
You can certainly ask me. Yes, I do. I have records of that, yeah. And we do have, you know, tracking on their vehicles.
That would be great.
And then just, you know, enforcement records. I'd be happy to share that. And I also have a, you know, data that I put out, high-level summary, but we can definitely, we'd be happy to share where that goes. And I include the zones, so number of citations by zone.
Okay. That's great, because one of my constituents got a, a permit for parking an RV on the street and was told that they, that Impark never goes down that street.
Well, probably differ, you know, it may not be every day. It may not be every week, but they do get to almost every corner of the city, you know, over a year's period. There are definitely, you know, certain areas and, you know, we're, we're going to need a phone call. There's an issue here, but.
But just to know would be really great. And then there's east zone enforcement, and then I noticed that pretty much the rest of the city, there's a northeast zone that's like downtown, and then there's northwest for much of District Five, all of District Six, all of District Seven. So, why does, why is the east zone specifically called?
That is a new zone. It, it currently, it, it literally had no zoning and no enforcement prior to.
East Bremerton?
Um, that's right, twenty-two. Very, very, well, it was.
I got tickets when I lived there.
It was, it was covered under our random patrols and, and on-call enforcement, but it had no zoning. So, it was new in our twenty-twenty-two version, and it's maintained here because they did need to, it's, it's large. It was a large addition. What we're doing over there has some very sensitive areas. So, we determined that to make it a regular, a regular beat, which we decided it needed. All of the other zones have their own regular beats at different times that really, there was a cost associated with that. It, it wasn't cost-effective for them to do it under the random enforcement amount with their amount of time and enforcement officers that they had. That makes sense. So, it was about adding a dollar value to that.
That part I get, but what is delicate about the east side? Due respect.
I'm very delicate.
There are many sections that we have parks, additional, you know, parks that require additional.
So, it's the preponderance of parks?
Parks. On Jennifer's Park, a part of the east side, I want to say, Lions and Blueberry.
There are many parks, yeah. There's a room there. And I would say that the Manette area has some, you know, specifics to it. There's a variety of areas. If you go up the hill, out of Levo, that area also has some specifics to it that take time. And so, it would. Um, that take time. And um, so we, you know, realize it really didn't have its own zone. It really didn't have its own value to the time that it was taking them. Um, so we moved some things around and agreed to the submission of the east zone enforcement.
Kind of as a result of public outcry?
Definitely. What it was, was uh so much on-call enforcement that we went, it's, this is beyond on-call enforcement.
So if the volume of complaints were to rise, the possibility that a zone might be created in north, in the northwest zone could arise?
It could. I, I mean,
Great.
You know, uh, it would
Okay.
Look at it, labor hours and budget and costs and all of those things. But yeah, it's always possible. Yeah.
Okay. Um, and ding, ding, ding. One moment, please. Um, I had a question on uh number one, the letter E. Talking about the maintenance of the enforcement vehicles. And the city could provide direct maintenance. Um, and I was just wondering how that's working out. Are they able to maintain the, the vehicles or is the city stepping in and doing a lot of direct maintenance?
Um, it's been very rare that the city does direct maintenance. Um, there's been a few items uh related to the LPR. Should we feel our city staff or the other experts in that? Get that, but uh, other than that, it has been
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. And again, thanks for bringing this to us in our guest.
Yeah, yes.
Mine is more of a comment instead of a question. Um, I have a lot of constituents who get really frustrated when um they want a vehicle towed. So is it possible for um some kind of simplified scope of what it takes to get a vehicle towed? And then put it on the city's website?
So I do have some impound updates for our website um that I have in draft. Um, this will must get rolled out for the end of the year. Um, that will just go over what to do if your vehicle isn't. Um, regarding what qualifies a vehicle for impound. Um, I would say that's covered in RBMC, ten-ten, uh, oh, seven-oh. Oh, one-ten, sorry.
But when somebody
Ten-ten, one-ten.
But when somebody is frustrated because a car's been parked on their street and it's full of garbage for months and they wanna know why we can't impound it immediately, for those situations, I think it'd be helpful.
Yeah, for sure.
This has to happen, this has to happen, and this in plain language. Sorry.
Infographic.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
And then another, another comment that I have. When I worked for a different agency, we had this real simple flyer called County Park here. And it showed pictures like there's a fire hydrant. You have to be fifteen feet away. There's a driveway. You have to be five feet away. I think you could easily steal that because I've seen it on multiple agency sites. And I think that would be helpful if we had it on the website where people could easily access it.
Okay. Um, we do have a parking rules page and we do have a flyer. Uh, but I would love feedback on that if you think it's
Okay.
Doing the job. Um, that was great.
I'd love to see if it included that you can't park in bike lanes.
Um, I can't really say if it does. It may not, but it may. Uh, so.
So maybe we can
Let's hope it does.
And if it does, then it's updated so that it does.
Maybe real by tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, I really appreciate that you're bringing this to us, not as an emergency.
Yeah, Ken.
Certainly, yeah, absolutely.
Good job.
Okay, how do we treat this item?
Consent.
Consent.
We're gonna put a parking item on consent.
I know. I know. We've been making progress.
Thank you, Ms. Monroe.
Thanks. Thank you, Melinda.
Setting includes agenda bill readings. And now we'll go to general council business. Mr. Goodnow is not here tonight. We have someone else on public safety committee.
Yeah, I'm the vice chair.
Okay. Feel comfortable summarizing what all went on?
I do, but it's gonna take me about one second to get.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, it, it's nice actually that it's me doing this because all three of the items that we had were submitted by me. So that works out well. Um, under court, however, we did have the opportunity to consult me out the news, to meet the new court administrator whose name is Yeah.
She's a Hawaiian gal.
Yes.
Okay. So it's a little difficult to pronounce if she's not from Hawaii.
Who's talking?
Yeah.
We don't wanna butcher it.
So anyways. That's all, like, I can't even remember the first letter of it.
Okay.
I, I really apologize. Um, but i- in my opinion, she looked smart, capable, knowledgeable, intelligent and really hardworking. She was right there. Uh, and it was just a brief introduction, but I think we have had really good luck with the new court administrator.
Good.
Um, okay, so um, I presented three items. And the first one was um a suggestion that I have put to Director Barker, but have still not received the, the answer to, which is let's consider watering our parks at night. Uh, you know, an effort to A, conserve water and B, just deter capping.
That didn't go. That wasn't like a committee recommendation or it didn't go through committee. It, you talked about it at committee, but I, no direction was, let's talk to Tim and see what Michael, I remember spoke out, cause I asked, you know, could we make that change? And he was very sensitive to the staff versus uh, uh, council role and uh, uh said that how parks manages its watering is the director's responsibility. That was my brief memory.
Yeah, and he also asked, does parks water during the day? Which, you know, they do. Um, I don't think it's out of line at all if at any point the council would like to recommend the park and safe force of action to demand it. Of course not. Um, so anyhow, that was the first item.
We also looked for data on is there a problem because um we weren't aware that it had become like Director Barker hadn't brought it to us that it was a problem.
Well, he goes, he reports to finance, you know, which I still think is, like, it's a better home than public safety, but not, sorry. Um.
It comes somewhere.
Exactly, exactly. It's definitely an improvement. Um, the second item that we looked at was basically, it's called Procuring Traffic Data Visualization Software, which is John Hickling translating me. Um, and what I had said is we have, we got reams of data from Bremerton Police Department at our last meeting that I have literally no idea how to do it. It was page after page. It'd be like um general vehicular assaults and it would have a, a number of citations. And other um even, you know, more, you know, every, every profession has its jargon. So like even more jargony thing where it's like, I don't know what this means. None of which contributed to, I'm just gonna gesture to where our goals and priorities used to be. Um, one of our goals and priorities is to use data to determine where traffic calming um, is most needed. So um, we, we talked about that and um Chief Wolf is looking into a few different types of software. He has been doing it for a while. He will continue to do so. He's got a lot on his plate. Um, yeah. Do you remember anything else about that Denise? That's all I can recall. Oh, the um.
Yeah, we escalated into our police and fire departments are about as busy as they could possibly be and um, so the chief seemed I, yeah, we've been talking about this software for a year and a half.
Yes.
Yeah.
And um, since it's one of our goals and priorities that we talked about at our retreat for the past two years. Um, and then the third one was the draft traffic calming. Has everyone had a check? Well, you guys have had a check to look at it, obviously. But it's um, one of the things in it is that any investigative study of traffic calming is brought to an absolute halt if uh, emergency responders veto it.
That's, that's not my understanding reading. It's, yeah.
There's, there's certain kinds of traffic calming, like if it's in a main emergency route. The trap, the draft traffic calming policy says that there wouldn't be speed humps. There's fifty other things you can use for traffic calming besides speed. Right. So it's not that they can just kill any traffic calming project. They can kill certain types, like you can't request speed humps on Eleventh Street. Right. But we could request something else to be looked at.
My, my perception, and I shared this during the committee meeting, sitting on both Public Works and Public Safety has been really eye-opening.
Yeah.
Because stuff comes up, the same stuff comes up in each. But we were assured at this meeting that at Public Safety, that uh Chief McGanney, uh, uh, the fire department has been meeting with Nick Atai, uh, uh, and Gunner um, uh, on the traffic calming policy.
Yeah.
Um, so.
Yeah, so I'm just gonna finish it here. Um, and al- almost done. Um, so one of the things that Chief McGanney mentioned at the time was that um, one of the things they might be able to do is to look at, you know, what's their desired response time, which is, I think, between six and seven minutes. And look at if speed cushions or other traffic calming measures were going to violate that. Um, so that was great. That was like an actual advance. And then, thank you for introducing this Denise. I wanted to go on to something that Chief Wolf said, which is that uh, the way he boiled it down is we're doing less with the same amount. You know, we're not doing more with less, but because there are state, there are state mandates. He said there, we're doing less with the same amount. Um, because there are state mandates for, for um requiring more officers to respond to a wider variety of calls. Um, this includes what I think is about fifty-one percent of the calls that officers respond to at Bremerton, which is domestic violence calls. That there need to be a, a really higher number of, of police officers. So like four and five, so that um, that they are
Everybody's safe.
Yeah. Well, I, totally. I get that everybody is safe. It also means that other people aren't safe. Um, you know, other, other things don't, don't get done because they are all there. And this is a state mandate and it's my proposal to council that we think about recommending that both chiefs quantify how many more staff they need as a result of this state legislation. And then this would be a role for council is to approach the legislature and say, okay, give us some money so that we can continue the type of um service we were able to offer in the past. Um, so I'm bringing it to you.
Sorry, a question on that. It's related to
I'm holding up.
During staffing, you guys talked about staffing for police and fire.
Mm-hmm.
I could have sworn the chief last time we discussed this, he was four or five behind in hiring, but not fully staff.
No, they're not fully staffed.
Four or five or something.
But even, even if they were fully staffed at the, the level that they're funded for, they're not fully staffed per recommendations. But yeah, you're right. There's a, there's, you believe it's, he's got a bunch of new, I think vast majority of the department are new.
Right.
Um, he's got a new department.
Issue just trying to get police officers anywhere in West Beach, Washington. I could be wrong, but I think that's an issue.
Well, the being fully staffed, that, that is an important thing, but it's a situation that it used to be two officers would respond to. Now they're required to send four to bed by state mandate.
I am not familiar with that. I'll have to look into that.
Our legislative office manager.
Yeah. Are they requiring four?
I mean, I don't know if either, I know that more for certain.
It's usually two, so I guess if that's two cars.
Well, yeah.
If they're driving around alone, that's probably what, I don't know why it used to be two, but that's all right.
There are domestic violence calls on my street every couple of months and usually it's three or four because somebody's gotta, some police have a weapon. So, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not.
It's not, it's not even the state mandating it. And I don't know what they've mandated, but and you know, I don't want anybody getting killed.
No, totally not. It's just if we can quantify how many more we need as a result of this taking care, then this might be something that would be useful to lobby the legislature for. That's, that's where I'm going.
Through the comprehensive plan and the services section, I've been assured that that services section is meant to be a planning model for the staff and facilities and all the resources that we're gonna need, right? To accommodate this growth, let's use that as an opportunity to get some actual like how much more are we gonna need?
My understanding of the comp plan is completely different. Mine is that it's aspirational. It's not that, I mean, we know that as the city grows, ESRC said we have to grow, that we're gonna need a satellite police station.
We're gonna need a whole new station. Yeah, yeah.
Well.
That comes through big time in the comp plan.
It's in the comp plan and it also says how many um square feet per officer
Right.
That we're supposed to have. We already don't have that.
Right.
And we haven't had it since the beginning of the last comp plan. So I don't think we can count on the comp plan. I do think that if the state legislature did actually mandate and it's not just part of us staying accredited. Then yeah, I do think we can go forth and, and lobby the state and say, if you're requiring this of our officers, then
They do that all the time.
Do an unfunded mandate. We could at least ask them.
They do unfunded mandates all the time.
It sounds more like an AWC thing rather than the city of Bremerton.
True. Our, our city attorney perked up at, at some point.
Whatever happened to Governor Ferguson ran on a campaign and saying, I'm gonna have to introduce more police officers.
People have been telling me we don't qualify for that funding or something when I ask, so.
Well, I'd be curious that maybe you could find that out uh next time you talk to police chief.
Yeah.
So I would think you would be interested in that.
I really thought that when this is supporting on us, uh, uh, recommendation that we start looking at this stuff. You know, I've, I've really been sounding the alarm about if we're growing, we're gonna need to make these investments and, you know, whether it's property tax or it's transportation district or I, you know, there's all these ideas. I was under the impression at mid-year budget review, which I guess we've already had. Um, right, that we were gonna get, do a full analysis of that, that there were gonna, we were gonna be provided by the accounting office, Mr. Riley, if you're on the call. Um, we were gonna be provided with all the, the choices. And it's up to council to decide where the energy should be placed. But percolating right along, not using a comp plan to then spur growth, you know, investment is wrong. I mean, it's just, it's a, putting the comp plan on the shelf and just letting it sit there.
I'm not saying we're just letting it on the shelf, but what I'm saying is
Hasn't been used before.
And we obviously are not gonna be able to do everything that some
No, no, no.
So that's why I say a lot of it's aspiration.
But the data's there that you're talking about in the services section.
The data that tells me which streets need traffic calming.
Uh, as far as investment and
Oh, oh, okay. Yeah, sorry.
I thought Mike did give us an update. So we did the budget thing and then he just said, although it wasn't complete, it wasn't a full presentation. It was certainly not presented at the following council meeting. That's why it was consent. But basically telling us about all these increased costs. And it's gonna be hard for us to cover that. So I got the idea of no buyers, no new program. I think that's the I think that's the message to the administration again. Well, so you asked for more police officers and more firefighters under our current budget, we can't do it.
There are, but that's been the MO, that's been the MO within this city. We can't do it, there's no money, we can't do it, there's no money, and that's why our property taxes, I'm sorry, they're low. Um way lower than they should be to fund the services that the city needs. I'm sorry to have to say that, but it's true. Um and then there's all these initiatives. Um I'm talking, what's going on with the Fire Department and merging with CK, you know, or Fire District. I know there's, there's, there's this going on, well, there's been this going on for years and years and years. And it's coming to the point where I really feel like we're not making the investments that this city deserves. Uh and if I can't have the information that to make those decisions, like what are the. What are the various options, just tell me what the options are.
Okay, so I, I hear what you're telling me, is that you'd like a presentation from Mike at some point saying, what are councilmatic options?
Yeah.
We can do to raise revenue.
Yeah, and I've read that there's a really good AWC.
It is.
On it, on funding, you know, for municipalities, so, yeah.
Yeah, so any of that, there was really nothing else.
You're right, it was all on it, we didn't, no, no, it just was coincidence, none of the departments had items they had brought. So, but they were good, we had good, it was good discussion.
I thought it was a deeply mutually respectful discussion, which, you know, what I like to see.
It really was a good discussion.
Alright, so then on I asked, you sent me an email.
I did.
And I said it was planned schedule, so, and you asked if uh you could present on.
I have two things at first.
Okay, on the um environmental stewardship. And I said, play schedule, sure, so are we okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So um we, we met and talked with um legal attorney panel. And um we were calling for a moratorium on permit activity in the freeway corridor. Which I'm sure you guys are all tired of hearing about, in, in just like that small section, and Attorney Panel said. It's unlikely that you could just choose part of freeway corridor, just because it wasn't within sight of the freeway, that wasn't a good enough reason. And um further responses from Director Spencer have been that. This is something they will consider studying sometime between now and the end of December twenty twenty-six. Um so that was as far as we got with that. Uh for me, well, I think for the, well, for the. For, for two-thirds of the committee, I have not heard from um Council Chamberlain on this. Uh it's, the thing is that there are a number of other parcels that also up at the Wright Creek Wetlands. So it, it would be very normal for the owners of those parcels to say. Well, this one parcel got their reasonable use exception, why can't I have it? Um and again, I'm just saying for the record that the residences are prohibited. In freeway corridor and adult entertainment can be. Is something that can happen, and I think that this is, this would not be a good idea right next to Pendergast Park. Um the second thing that Enviro came up with was applying to DNR for wildlife conservation area status. And that's kind of ongoing. Um the third one and the one that uh that the committee really wanted to carry forward. Was to adopt the critical area regulations um that Kitsap County has adopted. Not to, you know, and obviously change the name of Kitsap County to Bramerton and really not do anything else. Their regulations on rural areas, of course, we don't need. But this has gone through an extensive public review process. It survived a legal challenge. Um and it's obviously quite inexpensive to just take it. It, it would follow the intent of the comp plan, which is to have us be in harmony with Kitsap County. Which is in harmony with PSRC, et cetera, et cetera. Um that again have been bullpenned and DCD is. Has hired a consultant, environmental consultant, so then what wetland regulations. We should, what critical areas regulation we should have. Um so that has come to a halt. Um and then the fourth thing is something that everybody is okay with, with, I believe. We're just working with the Great Peninsula Conservancy to apply for a twenty twenty-six grant. To purchase the wetlands and their buffers for conservation for the conservancy to do so. Or for some other entity. Um the other thing, the last thing is a moratorium on gas stations. We've received public comment on this, and I think that. At this point, we really should be issuing our moratorium on gas, gas station. You know, new gas station permit applications. It's just, anybody live in an area of town where there are long lines at gas stations? You do, where?
Along the three oh three corridor.
There's lines?
Oh, where there's lines at gas stations to get gas, no.
Yeah. No, I know, Kitsap, Kitsap.
We got them, except Costco.
They're on lines, yeah. Okay, well, Costco, not in Bramerton. Um so I, I would very much like to pursue that. That's everything else.
Why, I don't, yeah, I don't understand.
So what's wrong with the marketplace determining if there's supply and demand for a gas station?
Because the marketplace is not going to pay for the decades of basically it being a black hole. Like the gas station at the corner of Sixth and Naval. Um the marketplace is not going to take into account the fact that by law. Um if you live within, I think, four hundred feet of such an area, before you can purchase a house, you have to need a. Very, very long document that lists each one of the chemicals that is there, which depresses property values. Um.
You're saying new gas stations are contaminating uh oil, they're usually the tanks are double all fiber by.
It's not just a tank, it's when you're actually fueling up.
Uh-huh.
That even though we now have those little things that fit over, there's still gas or materials that escape. That cause problem.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's like a public, public, public health issue, yeah.
Are there other things that you would wanna ban that, is there anything positive about smoke shops? People smoke cigarettes.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a good thing to do?
Is it?
And sales back.
Is it poisoning?
As a gas station.
It's poisoning a piece of permanent, right?
Our citizens, our, our residents, I should say. Yeah, I'm sorry, uh that's why I'm saying let the marketplace decide, it's gonna be a tough one for me.
Okay, well, it's um. Here, like the, the application for this particular one is.
For a gas station?
Yeah.
So there is an application.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's already been approved.
It's already, how's it, did it go through the hearing examiner?
I thought so.
Okay, so this is um the, you know, premier rental, which has been empty for years. On Kitsap Way near National Avenue, right next to the Family Pancake House.
Okay.
So here we have an area that is literally view property. It's a place that has excellent uh access for public transit. Um it's, would be a great place to develop a residential building. Um which is what we need, so that's, that's what is poignant to me. Whereas an, another gas station is going to um. There are so many, well, you drive that area, Eric.
Sure.
You know there's plenty of gas stations.
No worries, uh all I'm saying is it's a slippery slope when you decide what is the current zoning, what is best use for something, and you say, you know. That would fit, but now I don't want that, uh that, that's tough.
I, I understand.
That should be uh something, I don't think just because you hear about something, gonna show up at some place, you go, oh, I don't like those things, let's go have a moratorium on those. But that, that's just kind of a knee-jerk reaction to me, and I don't think that's appropriate.
Okay.
But that's just one opinion.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, um the thing with the gas station moratorium is not that I dislike them. You know, I drive a gas-powered car, um you know, I'm so unblameless. But I do think that um places that have had gas stations are very resistant to development. Again, I'm referring you to the former gas station at Sixth and Naval, which has been empty for over twenty-five years. Okay. Um and has depressed property values in, in a um, you know, radius around it. I think those are consequences that has good stewards of the people of Bramerton that we should be thinking about. It's not because I dislike gas stations.
Should we be looking at our, we actually kind of do, and we've been told that we can't really do much about it. Properties that aren't being developed, they're just sitting there. Um this one parcel is actually being developed, that should be seen as a positive thing. The one that you were described it on Naval, that's kind of hasn't been developed, why hasn't it been developed?
Because their tanks leaked, is my understanding.
Well, see, I don't know anything about.
Yeah.
Whether the tanks leaked or not.
Tanks.
Then there's another one at the corner of High.
Old station.
There's another one at the um corner of Sixth and High, like five blocks away too, an abandoned gas station that. The property owner would like to reopen this gas station, but it's been closed too long, so. It would have to.
There's issue, right?
Am I getting that? Oh, okay. So if we're already having entire zones that don't permit gas stations. Then clearly we have precedent for the idea that in some situation, gas station bad.
Yeah, I, I don't know, to me it's something like, Mr. Jackson, you're welcome to sit at the table here, uh please.
If you want to.
So.
It's a choice.
I'm asking.
There you go.
Why do they ask me? So, so you tell me, is this something, you know, the council can recommend it, I think it should be put in the bullpen. And then DCD should bring up the planning commission, we have to talk about whether we should not have gas stations in the City of Bramerton. Not go through that process and then have it come to the council for a vote as far as the comp plan, but not this. Hey, I don't, I got an application for a gas station, I don't like it there, to me, you're asking for a lawsuit, that's one. And, and two, it's just kind of a neat, and I understand the intent is good. And I'm answering the question before you answer it, but I feel that it should go through the planning permission policies.
That'd be great.
And that's something that I could talk to the director about on her return, I think that, you know, talking as a body amongst yourself on what next steps are, and including the city attorney.
Yeah.
Uh is probably a better, uh better way forward than asking for my opinion on what you should do, I mean, you're the governor of the body, so.
Well, how do we get something to go before the planning commission?
Uh we do have the bullpen, and so if, uh you know, as a body, you direct DCD to bullpen that item, that's something that we can do.
Well, I, I'm gonna support Councilman McLaury, bullpen this item, gas stations, do we need them or not?
Let's, let's use the process.
Do a, a.
Process.
Moratorium, let's, let's have, let's ask the plan. And their view on gas stations and come up with a, a studied, uh educated opinion. And then whatever, go through the process. Uh the planning, uh the uh comp plan update every year, whether they recommend it or not, maybe they say, no. I don't know.
Okay, we can take that feedback and move forward.
Uh so that was just me, I think I have honest support on that.
What is the timeframe on?
We're going to be doing our critical areas ordinance and landscaping uh here starting in September. We have a public committee, uh well, or some other items, so um. Uh we can probably start doing that. Maybe mid-year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Does planning commission meet in December?
Uh typically no.
Cause it'd be on the third, third Monday.
Um ju- generally, we don't have planning commission in August or December, so they can get their plans.
Okay, and what about November?
There is planning.
Okay, so we have October, November, and December.
Uh November, we will likely.
It's September, October, November, I think.
Uh yeah, and we're, we're working through the critical area ordinance and some other items. Uh during, so we're kind of booked maybe until the end of the year, but we can, like I said, take that to the planning commission.
There's lots of items in the bullpen, not to request to this council.
Yes.
We're just gonna add, I'm asking that we just add it to it, because we brought this up. But we're not necessarily saying you have to do it in October or November, we'll let you guys do your business, so. Are we in agreement, ask if you put in the bulk? Jane?
I would like it in the bulk.
Okay.
I agree, and I think that absent of. Uh a strong united uh uh commitment to environmental issues throughout the city. We're gonna keep playing whack-a-mole.
I'm having an eco forum on us, September eighth.
As things come up, and that's okay, right, that's what we do, as business comes forward, we address it then. Um uh and I would say that it'll be an interesting retreat next year. Because we'll have two different council members, and who knows what we're gonna come up with for you.
Well, you're quite right about the um needing a committed uh group. And that's why I'm holding the eco forum, is so I can go, hey, guys, you keep telling me you're interested in this, are you? Like, which of the things that I'm pursuing, because my job is to represent my constituents with everything I can swear with my conscience. Not to just like go off, um you know, the gas station thing that came from constituents.
Yeah.
Um and the Wright Creek Wetland, ditto. So, but just to make sure that I'm not like going, this is for the glory of honor, it's like, so the. Does this, what, what do you guys want?
Mm-hmm.
So uh just a really quick follow-up question to your original question, Eric, which is. So when you're looking at the critical areas ordinance, have you considered the massive simplicity of simply. Replacing twenty point fourteen with the Kitsap County Critical Area Ordinance?
Uh.
It's illegal?
To not do that.
It's illegal?
Yeah, you can't cut and paste what our county did, we have to go through the process, it's required by commerce. There's, there are cities that are under fifteen thousand um populations that can adopt the county, um but we are, we are not one. So we have to go through our own process.
My goodness.
And we thought that GTP could do everything.
The whole process, we are undertaking it, I will let everyone know, we are inherently, get more information on this. Um I would not be surprised if it looks very similar to Kitsap, because we're using the same. Um we are required to do our own work, um and go through the process.
Okay, well, apart from that, Mrs. Lincoln, how did you like the play? Um, okay, well, I think that's a very cogent objection, um yeah.
We don't qualify for the exemption.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To do.
Yeah, I get it, um okay.
So much sense. I hate it when that happens.
All right, well, I like it that the state is refusing to let us plagiarize, even though it's, you know, inconvenient at this time. Okay, so um.
We're certainly looking at the county code, like Kylie said, we were hired a. Uh consultant.
In the same consult, yeah.
Consultant with local tribes and state agencies.
Did this person also work for City of Paulsbo, because their Paulsbo and, and the county are very similar regulations?
Um I'm not sure what other jurisdictions.
Okay, sorry, all right, well, thank you for bullpennying, and thank you for clarifying, um. Can we, like, let Mr. Jackson get off the hot seat here?
I, I think so, Kylie, do you have a question?
I did, I just wanted to, so, um. Cause I, I'm taking notes, um so you, I, I got five things out of that, so there was the freeway corridor bullpen. Gas stations bullpen, Kitsap critical areas we just talked about, and then there were two other things that was applying to DNR. And working with the TPC, and I didn't. What, what's going on with those, because I, I don't re, I thought we kind of didn't really. What what's going on with those? Because I I don't re- I thought we kind of didn't really do talk too much about those when we met. And so he said that that was on the applying to V N R, what what's? I guess what's happening? I don't under- I didn't understand.
Um, nothing is happening.
Okay.
Uh, just answering your question, and the the thing with G T C is the same thing. It's been every other time I've publicly discussed this with the council, which is that was why Wright Creek Wetland, the major reason that Wright Creek Wetland went into the cop plan was that formed a basis for applying for a grant that only comes up in even years. So it came up in twenty twenty four. I don't know if you remember.
Yeah, I do, yeah.
And then it'll come up again in twenty twenty six, so I'm trying to be better at preparing for.
Is there like a person that they could maybe kind of talk to this or like a photo session or something? Cause I think that would be helpful to get.
From the conservancy?
Yeah. Or the, yeah.
Yeah, or, I mean, anybody.
Just so that it it's there's clarity on what what they initially plan council meeting is so that they're.
Yeah, and make sure that they're not asking old council, by the way, you're agreeing to give us a half million or five dollars to buy the property. It sounds very.
Been hearing that a lot lately.
Just to make sure all, everyone is uh, you know, I don't know.
Yeah.
Like me, we've had a good day, now give me your house.
Right.
All right.
Okay.
Are are we done? And then Jane, you got, first of all, that was a questions I'm gonna ask you, you're done. Yeah, hold on. Thank you, Jane, go ahead.
Okay, two things. Um, well, Michael and I attended the meeting that the Navy had, which was an open house. It wasn't a presentation.
Presentation.
Um, so there's three options. One, of course, nobody wants, which is do nothing. Um, the second option, and I'm, I could get the option numbers incorrect. Another option is taking down building four sixty, that big giant building that says Puget Sound Naval.
With the brush and windows.
Yes. That's alternative two, right? I don't know the number. I I don't want to say which one is.
Take it down.
Take that down and build a huge dock for an aircraft carrier maintenance. Um, that will take approximately twelve to fourteen years to build that. Um, Michael likes that one because he felt having seven thousand people who are stationed on an aircraft carrier coming for lunch in downtown Bremerton would be great, you know? Um.
Maybe see a movie.
I didn't like it so much because um, number one, by taking down that building, which wasn't in the original E I S. And building something for an aircraft carrier right at the edge of Harborside Park and City. It's gonna create a lot of noise, dust. And plus, you're gonna see this gigantic aircraft carrier looking like it's gonna launch in into downtown.
So the noise I could see a problem with, but actually looking at the carrier, I think would be cool, but.
Okay, well, you and I have different ideas on that, cause I look at the, all the mothballed ones out there, so I'm not as enamored. Um, the other proposal would be building it kind of mid yard. So at least there you've got some geography of the hillside to buffer the noise. Plus, the construction vehicles and the vehicles taking the debris out would be going in the opposite direction, wouldn't be traveling through downtown streets.
But would they be using the Naval Avenue Gate?
No.
No.
They'd use Charleston.
Okay.
Yeah, they'd be going that way. Plus, that one calls for them building a parking garage.
Awesome. Oh.
So that's my my preference, and I might not have captured all of Michael's. So when Michael comes uh to the next meeting, we can have a discussion.
But it's not like the council's deciding, we're taking everybody's comments.
Yes, they're taking comments, so.
Can we offer comments as a council?
Um, I know we can offer comments individually.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if we can, if we would all be in agreement to.
Fair enough.
Do one set of comments from council.
So.
You can sign your name.
Yeah, when's the decision being made?
Uh, well, they're taking comments, I believe, until September sixth. I don't know when the decision, the fifth, you think it is? Okay, I'll double check on that.
The community is very engaged.
Well, I would think there would have been a lot more people there. Frankly, I didn't know about it until.
It was law ordinance, yeah.
So, yeah, so I don't know how engaged the community is yet, but hopefully they get more engaged.
Who makes the decision? The commander? Uh, with the commander of Naval Base Kids App, or is that Washington D C?
I would think I would.
I'm thinking D C.
Yeah. They probably.
Because one of the reasons why they don't want to do um, the one in the middle of the yard, it's cause they have to dredge more. And in my mind, dredge all that crap out that you've been dumping there for a hundred years.
Sure.
But that's not exactly what.
Oh, that would be hazmat disposal.
Well, it might be. Everything that leaves that shipyard pretty much is hazmat. You know, I mean, it all gets contaminated one way or another. So that's my comment on that. And the next one is we're gonna have a booth at the Doc Loves Kids event called Ask the Council. I've already had a banner made. Um, Anne's been helping um, put together some things. Because one of the big frustrations that I hear from the community is we come up with public recognition and you guys won't answer our questions. So this is an opportunity for us to talk back and forth to more people. Um, Anna, your Spanish is okay. So about.
Um, we all have interpreters on our iPhones.
I speak Spanish like a four year old kid. So, not bad.
I'm pretty good one. I have a couple margaritas.
I don't think I want to hear your Spanglish then.
Moving right along.
So anyway, Anna volunteered. If you wanna buy two, it's.
When it is?
The twenty third, which is next Saturday, not this coming one.
Okay.
Um, I have to set up somewhere between ten and eleven. The event starts at noon. Everything at the event is free. Nobody's allowed to sell anything. It's free food, free backpacks, free, free everything. And they're gonna have different community resources, so. I'm hopeful that's gonna be a lot of fun.
I've got our parade banners in the back of my car. I should bring them up to the council.
And one of the things that I'm hoping to have ready by the twenty third is some having a government one on Long Town Hall in October. And just to have like maps of this is the city, this is the county.
Yeah.
You know, just some of the the most common questions that we get asked. There's a bunch of handouts, for example, on chronic nuisance property, what you can do about it.
I don't think that's the crowd that's coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't envision.
These are kids coming in for.
They're, yeah, it's.
And we also, we need supply.
We, we're having candy and stickers.
Food bags, water department.
We, we, but that's something the water department paid for, so I don't even want to ask them. It's, cause it's our, you know, it's a council event. I mean, if you want to give us stuff, fine, but I don't, I don't want to dive into other departments' budgets and ask them for.
When when Reac had a booth at Juneteenth, the water department gave us swag. That was.
So I think we can supply a few water bags, which.
If you have something, that would be great, but, but yeah, I don't wanna, I don't want to twist your, our stuff.
Well, Mr. Jackson's listening. I I think they got something in their closet too.
Bremerton's old comp plan stickers. I've got every version of those. Okay.
So, so do you think you're gonna have more than three council members? Cause we could just set, issue a notice of potential for them, and then I would cover everything.
No, I don't think so. I'm sure Michael's busy on a Saturday. I figured you would be out of town.
I am out of town. I'm flying out on.
I know Jeff's got something else.
I can do it. Well, I think that's great. The weekend, I love Doc.
Yeah, I do too.
Okay.
I thought this was a really, really, really smart idea.
Well, I'm tired of getting yelled at for not answering people's questions.
Oh, you'll still get yelled at. Okay, reach only another committee.
Kids App Transit on vacation in August.
All right, so was the nine one one uh, four two. Okay. Other council business as necessary.
I've got it, oh. I went to the teen Bremerton meeting yesterday, which is uh, mostly downtown Business Association folks. The mayor was there, uh, our parks director was there talking about the planning that they're doing for FIFA.
FIFA, yeah.
And previously, they were gonna do it down on the boardwalk, but now they're gonna do it up in Quincy Square. And they, I'm not sure if they've been mandated, or they decided it's the best idea to have an illuminated television. Because they have to be showing the games, but the pricing is just unbelievable. Like fifty thousand dollars to rent it for six months, so. Uh, six weeks.
How big a TV is this?
I can't be that big.
They got big ones at Costco, don't they?
I know, and that's what I'm saying too. So, I don't know.
Once you can return them after the event, no, I'm just kidding.
Going, going up to the thirty thousand foot view uh, as council. Um, I'm not as concerned about the details of the events. What I would like to find out is where's the uh, scope of work? Where's the contracts for all this? Or at least know, where's the thirty five grand we gave for?
Forty five grand.
Forty five for the rest of Quincy Square. Did that have an R F P? Has that already been gifted or granted? Um, those are the things that I really am interested in with that, and I'm sure aren't discussed maybe at that meeting.
Nope.
But maybe uh, Anne, it it at a certain point, it really would be nice, just for an update since we approved those funds. Um, for, you know, uh.
I think that the activation of Quincy Square.
Yeah.
Is one thing. FIFA's another thing.
Right.
But they did say that the Washington, I'm probably gonna ruin this, Washington Beverage Association is planning on having a beer festival here instead of Seattle. Only Father's Day weekend, uh, which is also a FIFA weekend.
Oh, that.
Everybody happy about that, dads?
That should be nice and quiet.
Well, it's gonna be so big, it's also gonna be on Pacific, because they can't fit all that. So.
And they left a vendor out hanging on the boardwalk, but that's okay. That's business.
I'm not biting.
Yeah, so I, 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 um.
Okay.
Yeah, so I attended the the first meeting of the community advisory team, which is Washington Department of Commerce's. They're trying to elevate community voices instead of people who um. Want money.
The word I'm thinking of is feel uncompromising, so I'm trying to think of a better one. Um.
People whose profession this is.
And you have.
Like us?
No, I mean, people who have been technical advisors for years and years and know a lot about it. But uh, are perhaps more used to speaking to other people who are in that same profession rather than to the community. I thought it was a really great meeting. I, after the first hour and a half, I had just meetinged out. Um, but I'm looking forward to further. And I have one small good of the order for when we're ready.
Thought that was good of the order.
Yeah, that's good.
So, um, we got an estimate on the Jurassic Parliament and um, for all of us, it would be seventeen hundred bucks. Um, for a Zoom meeting, if we want her to come here and, you know, meet with us in person, which um, that would be an extra three hundred bucks. Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So I think that's a really great investment, if it means that we never again have to say from the desk, I don't know. And she's free in the first week or ten days of December. Which is.
I gotta say, I'm I think there could be better facilitators than that. I know you're a big fan of that, but I I'm not. I I think there's people who could have an in-person meeting with us to go over it better.
Have you taken a Jurassic?
Yes, I have.
Okay.
I've taken two and.
So I'm glad you spoke up. I have issue with the dollar amount. That's two, two hours worth of work. And that's uh, I'm not aware of an attorney who were hired for eight hundred fifty dollars an hour. I'm I'm not comfortable with it. I know we can afford it, it's just, I'm just not comfortable with that kind of money for uh, two hours of me as doing.
Maybe we could uh, laminate their materials again and hand them out to the new council members. That's what I got. But, and that was handy.
Right, Jeff.
I think I still, I think, yeah, yeah.
Um, okay, well. Um, thank you for telling me about, telling us about these other people who would do it. Where are they? What are their names? How do we get ahold of them?
Well, you don't put her on a spot like that. I, it's um.
I was.
Toronto.
Well, it felt like you were.
Do we really need it?
Yes.
Well, you know, we we're not volunteers. We are getting a stipend for doing this. But I don't think it's a big deal if we turn to the city attorney or the city clerk and say, how do we maneuver this? You know, when we have to uh, modify an ordinance on the the fly or do something. I, I think having more, you know, training in parliamentary procedures is good, but it's not like anybody, well, it's not like I am gonna memorize everything in a two hour class and know three years later, okay, in this instance, I have to do this. So. And frankly, I'm not that interested. I mean, I want to, I want to, I'm being totally honest.
Vice President.
I want to do it the.
Well, I'll, I'll second that. I'm not interested at all.
No, you, you've said you don't, you have, you've said in the past that you're not interested in Robert's rules. And so I get that.
It's a general guideline, and and it says that in our council rules and procedures, but then I feel comfortable with just.
Okay, managing the meeting.
Yeah, it's um, I I found it once when we had a, I don't want to be critical of anybody, but we went one year. I don't know who all was here, but this particular council president wanted us to go through this procedure going through and address all questions to him or her, whoever that may be. And it did not go well. It did not. And and I just know this group, and I'm going, oh my goodness. I I know you guys.
Yes.
This, I'm sorry, I'm just being real. I, I'm just trying to be an honest book here. This is not gonna be well spent money, not not with council.
You know, if the majority doesn't want it and it doesn't happen, that's what makes council so much easier than regular.
But it was well intended for professional development, and I appreciate.
And and the thing is, is that you can take it individually, it's much cheaper. And and then if you want to impart that knowledge, and if your co-councilors care to wish to listen to you, or you just lead by example, some of it'll rub off and it'll improve that way. So it's not like, oh, I can't do anything about it. It's just, we're not gonna do it.
Yep.
Experimental learners, that's what we are.
On that note. Oh, wow, I should actually look at my uh, notes here. Okay, Kids App County is launching its first community survey in twenty years for the publicized feedback on their budget priorities, which will be open from August nineteenth to September second. There's a website you go to, it's too long for me to, I'll read it for the record. It's P O L C O dot U S slash N, uh, forward slash N, forward slash R E S, forward slash sign up to sign up for notification when the survey will be available. Did you guys get postcards saying that you were selected for a survey too?
No.
Oh, they said only to certain people, my wife.
Although I haven't checked them out for a week.
Uh, it came last week, uh, so uh. My wife filled it out. And then uh, Jane, you're gonna be doing the Doc Live Kid Stay on Saturday, August twenty third, from twelve to three P M. And that's at Lions Park, for anybody that's listening. Community event provides free backpacks and back to school supplies to students. A great, great cause. Uh, save the date here for us, uh, Wednesday, September tenth is the annual city employee picnic. Maybe a softball game or anything. You guys, you guys, Garrett, you go to that picnic every year?
Year.
You guys play softball?
There one year there was a tug of war.
There's no softball at Evergreen. What could you do there? Horseshoes. They used to have horseshoe.
They still have horseshoe beds.
They used to have a swimming pool there, too, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I digress.
They used to have a rose garden in there.
All right.
Yeah, for meeting space.
No, no. Okay, just a reminder, oh, slide content for council reports will now be due by noon on Tuesdays.
Oh, noon on Tuesday?
Noon on Tuesdays.
Wow, okay. Noon on Tuesday.
For council reports, it was Wednesday at noon. It's okay.
Yeah.
Well, we just want to move it up so we could draft the slides and make sure that.
Okay, so you're gonna let them, you're gonna say, hey, we drafted it, shoot it back to them, and then they have time to comment.
Very thoughtful.
Yeah.
All right. Next council meeting will be Wednesday, August twentieth, starting at five thirty P M. First floor meeting chambers, Noran Bay's Government Center, publics invited to attend in person or remotely. But anyone wishing to speak during public recognition via Zoom must submit a request through the city clerk by calling three six zero four seven three five three two three at least twenty-four hours prior to meeting. Meeting's adjourned.